First, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just and eternal.
We will now call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, if we could call the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam, or Mr. Chairman.
Yes, here. Okay. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is at the rear of the room on the wall. Our agenda, first, we have the County Board of Equalization, and we have three items, two items, first. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization held Tuesday, January 10, 2012, and a call for a meeting set January 31, 2012, as a date for hurrying on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased property values.
Motion to approve.
If we could vote, please.
Motion passes.
Next, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone who wants to talk before the Board of Equalization on issues not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed. Item D, Resolutions, certified assessments correcting, corrections reflecting correction in the values and approval. E is approving government-owned properties. F is approving government-owned properties. The first one, E is the United States of America. G is approving government-owned properties, Secretary of Veterans Affairs. H is approving corrections for errors in assessment of personnel property. And I is approving application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion to approve. De，请 adjourn.
I guess that's vote call.
Motion passes.
Now, we will convene the Douglas County Noxious Weeds Control Authority. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. We have three items. First is approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on Tuesday, August 16.
Motion to approve.
Motion passes.
And next, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to comment to the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority? Seeing none, we will go to Resolution Number Three, placing special assessments on property in Douglas County. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this?
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? If we could vote, please. Now, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry about that. Yes, motion to adjourn. We have a motion in a second. If we could vote on that, please.
Just a moment, please.
I'll get into the rhythm of this, you know. Give me nine more, 10 more months, you know. Now, we will re-- oh, I'll wait.
Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes.
Now, we will reconvene, or we will convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Mr. Chairman.
And we have minutes and claims. A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 10, 2012, and B is approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, January 24, 2012. A complete listing is on file and online in the clerk of the county clerk comptroller's office.
I'm going to abstain on B because there's a couple of checks on our management, to PJ Moore and management.
Okay. And C is presenting a report requesting action on claims being submitted for payment as exception to Tuesday's January 24 list.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Motion passes.
Next, we have item two, which is a consent agenda. We're going to, pardon?
Can I speak to?
Yes. You certainly may. This consists of items A through K, and Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I wanted to speak to Consent Item A, which is the resolution approving the agreement with the United Way of the Midlands for the Court Referral Community Program. I asked for some information from Mark Kraft and Kathy Kelly on this subject, and I got a very clear report back. I think everyone got one, and it is really excellent. So, I think this is the best way to go with United Way.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate the efforts of the staff and of Mark Bittman at Foxhole.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve A through K.
Call for the vote, please.
Can I vote twice if I say yes?
Motion passes.
Claire likes that.
Yeah, then they cross each other out, so then no vote.
Next, we have a presentation, and Kathy, do you have a copy of that from the question for Resolution? I'll read it off the online. This will take me a moment. Please hold on. Oh, okay, thank you. Okay. This is with respect to Mary Ann Borgensen, who has served for the past two years as a very exceptional chair. Whereas Mary Ann Borgensen has served as Chair of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for the past two years, and whereas Mary Ann's experience and leadership played an important role in county government during the past two years, providing cost-effective services to the taxpayers of Douglas County, and whereas, under Mary Ann's leadership as Chair, she organized strategic planning sessions for the county board, oversaw the opening of the new CSI lab, renovated Midtown campus building, the redrawing of county district boundaries, recommended the NACO dental discount card, and the contractual agreement with YouthLinks to care for chronic runaways. And whereas, Mary Ann created and oversaw the county government awareness committee and launched the county food bank drive that November collected 6,517 food items, and whereas many challenges presented themselves to the county board during 2010 and 2012. As Chair, Mary Ann invigorated ideas, innovative ideas, meant those challenges promoted county government in a positive light. Now, therefore, now, it does not mention the Blue Ribbon Committee, that was her idea, which was to analyze the health campus and how we operate there. And we're having great results with that. Now, therefore, be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that the Board wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to Mary Ann Borgensen for her guidance and leadership during 2010 and 2011, dated this 24th day of January, 2012.
Motion to approve.
Mary Ann, congratulations.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair, can I make a couple remarks?
You certainly may.
Well, I really want to personally thank Mary Ann for her leadership. It's been very thorough. She's very knowledgeable about a lot of issues, and we're very, very fortunate to have her as a member of our Board, but also as our Chair. So, we don't always agree on everything. In those cases, she's just wrong, but, you know. I do appreciate her efforts. She's really been a terrific Chair, and I thank you very much.
Kudos to that. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Now, we have citizens' comments, people who wish to address the county board on issues not on the agenda. Please come forward, and we'll ask you to state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mikel Zappacrow. I live at 7845 Whitmore Plaza in the Woodgate Public Housing Community.
Sheila Smith, and I live at 7826 Whitmore Plaza in the Woodgate Community.
I had a bunch of great notes, and a wonderful person took them off to copy them all for you after doing some research and trying to work with Ms. Bernerlini directly. We were directed by a lawyer to contact HUD, and I have them all listed out on my paper. I'm sorry. But we were told to contact a couple of different areas for assistance because our civil rights are being violated. And in my notes, I also have where everyone's civil rights are being violated on the property, whether a smoker or non-smoker. One thing is, they finally came out and put out a ramp, but they put it leading right into Sheila's driveway, and that's still not acceptable under the ADA or the Title III Class Act standards that are supposed to be held up to for handicapped or people with disabilities.
I'm just going to start from the beginning for anyone that doesn't even know what we're talking about. Okay, we live in Woodgate, which is a Douglas County Housing Authority property, and a smoking shack, whatever, building was put up because they wanted it to be smoke-free, and this was the only place on the property to smoke. But the thing about this is, I was here last time complaining because it's 25 feet from my front door, 20 feet from my daughter's bedroom window, 20 feet from the little girl that has cancer and is blind, from her window. But for one second, we're going to forget about that because Joan is saying it's all about me. It's not all about me. No one at this facility likes this. We asked her why she did not talk to us. She said she talked to another Douglas County Housing Authority complex with older people that were wiser than us, and--
No, excuse me. She, her statement was, and I believe that a gentleman in the room might possibly have that recorded on tape, is that they interviewed two of the other disability handicap properties, the ones with the 80 and the 90-year-olds, because we were supposed to be able to get arounds better than them.
So, anyway, she didn't ask us. She asked them what should be done with our property, and she took their advice and everything. So, the thing is, we're forgetting about me. Remember that? Okay, so, this is right outside my house, even though we're not talking about me, but you're asking disabled people to come over 200 feet right outside my window to smoke. You have people in wheelchairs, people that have had both their knees replaced, just all kinds of disabilities. You're asking them to come out 24/7 because outside my window is the only place on the property where you can smoke, the only place. And on the 14th of January, a person came out, and they're smoking, so I went out and asked them how they liked it. They said they did not like it. It was too far, and it was their first time. How is that their first time? When? It started on January 1, and that's the only place on the property you can smoke. People are not using it. It's a waste of money, and how much money did it cost? Because when we were called to mandatory meeting that if one person in your household did not show up, you were going to get a 14-day eviction. So, we went to the meeting. They told us what was going on on the property and everything, and then they asked if we had any questions. Everyone asked, can we have a playground because there's so many children? No, we cannot have a playground because there's no money in the budget. If there's no money in the budget for a much-needed playground, how do we get money in the budget for a smoking facility which is not up to standards? And I'm not very happy because I asked you guys for help, and you invited us back, and in the meantime, I wrote a letter, and it takes me forever to write, and I wrote a letter, and I addressed it to the Douglas County Housing Authority Board. I sent out seven faxes and seven letters, and I was thinking that everybody was in the same office, but they're not. And you guys know that, but I didn't know that. So, I have 30 bucks to my name. I went and got ink with half of it. I went to Baker's with the other half, and I sent out seven different letters, and my phone went off. Joan called me and told me she intercepted all seven of those letters. No one from the Board would be coming to this meeting, and no one would be getting those faxes. And right before my phone went off, I just put a letter to them all in the mail. So, if they didn't get the fax, maybe they'll get the letter. But again, I'm thinking the letters are all going to the same place, but they must have a box to put those in, so nobody's going to take their mail because, in my mind, that's against the law. No one's going to take the fax because, in my mind, that's against the law. But she got the letters, and she got the faxes, and she called me, and I've got it all on recording because I don't pick up for Joan. Because I picked up for her once with Mike McKnight there and 500 other people. I don't hear well, so I put you on speakerphone when I answer the phone. And so, she said that, she kept telling me to shut up. She, it was supposed to be a conversation, but every time I asked her a question, she's like, Sheila, Sheila, be quiet. And so, it was a one-sided conversation. She told me what she wanted me to hear, but I didn't get to give my opinion. I kept asking her questions. She kept shutting me down, so I don't take Joan's calls. But I do have four recorded messages where she said she took the faxes, where she said she took the letters, where she said no one on the committee was coming. How can she answer for those people? She doesn't know what they thought if they read the faxes or if they read these letters that I personally sent to them. So, I'm very upset that, and someone took a bad idea, a very bad idea, deciding to put up the shack, making all these handicapped people come out of their house. It's not centrally located, and we didn't get a say in it. So, you have people coming out, and nobody uses that thing except for my next-door neighbor. She comes out five times a day, but no one else uses this thing. It's a waste of money. It's a bad idea that every time I send a letter, not to Joan, but to someone else, saying how it's not handicap accessible, they keep fixing all the things that I tell them are wrong with it. But it's still not right because they still have another problem, but I haven't sent that letter out yet.
May I step in?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Under the U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division, Individuals with Disabilities, the American with Disability Act provides comprehensive civil rights protections for individuals with disability. An individual with a disability is a person who has a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities, or has a record of such an impairment or is regarded as having such an impairment. Example of physical, mental, excuse me, let me get just straight down to the point. Major life activities include functions such as caring for oneself, performing manual tasks, walking, seeing, hearing, speaking, breathing, learning, and working. We don't have a handrail to get out there. Actually, I can honestly say that nobody scooped or put down any ice melt for my lot. I had to carefully hold on to my garage in order to get out to the car this morning.
Mr. Chair, could I, okay, I don't mean to interrupt you, but to me, and I've asked some of the other commissioners, too, what their feelings are about what's taken place, and there's been a, to say there's been a breakdown in communication is definitely an understatement. I'm very concerned about your communications being intercepted, not delivered. I just can't explain that. Unfortunately, the Director will not come to the meeting to explain what took place, and apparently doesn't want to meet with us. So, I'm not really sure what course of action we can take, but we will, I will be issuing a request, asking her to come meet with us, some of us at least, to discuss what's going on and to try to get this remedied. Something's gone off the track out there.
Well, and another thing, you know, when they put out the new standards, it was effective in January. It's not even sheltered from the environments, and when they do shelter it from the environments, it's still not going to have the proper amount of room for a person with a wheelchair to be able to be mobile in there.
Well, and I understand the problem of smokers and so forth. I used to smoke an awful lot, and actually, I like to get second-hand smoke when I can. But anyway, that's another problem I have. But I think we need to get to the bottom of why you're being treated this way and why you've had this kind of reaction.
Exactly.
It's, it doesn't sound very healthy, and it's not just, you know, one person doesn't seem. It seems like it's, there's a whole lot of people who are affected, and the three of you are stepping up, so.
Well, and I just moved in, and everybody else won't because of their fear of retaliation. And since I've started this, I've got two more 14-day notices for other malarkey stuff.
And I don't understand that either. I mean, we've, you know, we need to get to the bottom of it. So, what I would like to do, we have some material that you brought that we're having copies made, and there was quite a bit of it, and so--
Yeah, that has a lot more of the details on the which faxes are being violated.
Right. So, we'll be passing it out to everyone. So, what I would like to do to let you know, and others may have other opinions, but I would like to extend an invitation to Joan to visit with us about what's happened, hear her side of the story, because we've only heard yours, and then see what we can do to try to assist you. We don't have any direct authority over the Housing Authority. We do approve appointments, which I think I'm going to be a lot more vigilant on when they come by next time. So, that's what I'd like to do, to try to get this resolved.
They did ask us if we wanted to come to this Friday's meeting, but we had to get there, like, what, 45 minutes early to go ahead and do all the proper processing and paperwork and stuff, even though this is a known issue.
You're talking about the Housing Authority?
Mm-hmm. So, if anybody would like to come with us, I'm inviting you.
Say that again. You had to do what?
We have to be there 45 minutes early so we can fill out any paperwork that they have that needs to be done in order to get us on the agenda.
To get you on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Morgan has a question for you.
When we, and somebody else can answer this also, but Commissioner Boyle, when we invited the Director to come down, what was the response?
Well, I was just talking to, if I could, I was talking to Commissioner Borgeson because I thought she got, Christopher Borgeson got an email back, and I just talked to her a minute ago, and she said that Joan sent it to everyone, and I, unfortunately, I never saw it. I can't, my computer won't allow me to pull up the county email here, so I can't even read what her response was. Maybe you can summarize it, but if you don't mind.
Yeah, everybody got, and it's pretty much what you said, that not in the detail of which housing units they went to, but that they held meetings and got input from the residents to find out what they should do, whether to make the facility all smoke-free or go with this smoking little shack. And she named off different meetings that were held and input that was given, and then just respectfully declined to come to our meeting, but did say that she was willing to meet with three of us. You, and at the time, I was Chair and one other Commissioner, because we can only have three at a time, and I believe it was her Board Chair. I don't have the email any longer, but, so, that's where it was left. And we, it really didn't, the meeting didn't happen. It just went out to Commissioners. There was an email from, or not an email, but a discussion with Commissioner Boyle saying, do people want to pursue this? And people said yes, and so, here we are today.
Appreciate that.
So, I think the next, as Commissioner Boyle said, the next step would be to follow up and hold that meeting.
Well, and the whole paper that you were copied from my notebook, excuse me, we did contact HUD, Equal Housing Commission, the Nebraska Equal Opportunity Committee, and Legal Aid, and been told that we have recourse for civil rights reaction, or civil rights recourse, anyway. But throughout there, the little stars that are next to things, I'm sorry, those little stars that are next to things point out everything that I've reached, searched under Title III and the ADA Disabilities Act as being violated rights.
Well, yes.
Can I just ask what the two 14-day notices were for?
Oh, yeah. One was, again, to be sure that I was following smoking procedure, again, and then the second one was the main office didn't have my birth certificate, my children's birth certificate, or our civilization forms or something. And that was all stuff that had been done in the first place, and the property manager actually had, but they didn't go to the property manager and ask the property manager first.
Thank you.
Was Commissioner Boyle, you have more?
Well, I think we should follow the course. Unfortunately, as I said, I never saw those, that email, and I'm not able to pull it up. So, I'm glad that she did contact us to meet, and so, we'll do that, and we'll follow through on this and keep you informed.
Would you recommend that we attend the meeting on Friday?
Well, I don't know, you know.
I don't believe so.
Anybody think? Claire, what do you think?
Is this a meeting of the Housing Authority Board?
No.
No, it's just Joan.
It seems to me what they want is a private meeting, not a public meeting.
Correct.
So, there's only three Commissioners. My thought is, you know, hey, anytime I'm meeting, if somebody wants it to be open, I think it ought to be open, and what's the fear of, I mean, we're a public body, and they are, too, and they ought to just come, and if you feel strongly about something, hey, you ought to state it and not be hiding behind some private meeting so you can say this, but no one's there to really correct the other side of that story.
Well, you know, even though there's been, you know, there's been various letters that have stated that the property's been non-smoking, or that they were allowed to smoke, just not inside the units, you know, everybody's garage is a sheltered spot. It's attached but deattached. It's separated to the place, I'm sorry, and nobody was complaining beforehand. Nobody. I mean, people would smoke in their garage, or they'd smoke out on the back patio, or stand out, you know, in the middle of the street. They're not affecting anybody. They weren't hurting anybody, and smokers weren't feeling, but they were imposing their second-hand smoke upon people that didn't want it.
Can I say something? Can you guys look at those pictures? Would you do me a favor and notice how, when they were doing the work on the smoking area, they used my electricity?
Which is the opposite of civil rights.
And they used the other lady's, and the generator was surging, that it blew a bulb and shot it out of my light fixture.
And then, we have some more comments. Commissioner Boyle, are you done?
I'll yield it, Commissioner.
Well, I just, I gather that what you're describing Friday is a meeting of the Douglas County Housing Authority Board.
Yes.
They have one on Friday.
And yes, I think absolutely you should be going in. I mean, these are the people that can impact what is happening and should be aware of your concerns, and so, my thinking is absolutely that is the Board you want to be present at.
I agree to a degree. I disagree because of the effects that Ms. Bernerlini has already taken to ensure that the Board's unaware of the issues that are coming present.
But then, how are they going to be made aware? If she is stopping the information, then it's incumbent upon you to go and share with them so you know that they know and hear their response. They're the only ones that can effectively remedy your problems here.
Correct. Commissioner Morgan?
I think we should make another request that they come down to the county board meeting. I really do, and I think it ought to be public. We're doing-- We're doing our budget things public, and there just isn't anything to hide. And if they make the request one more time, and all of us, if we are all unanimous, we ought to just state that today, that we would appreciate them coming down to talk to us. What's there to hide? I'd make that as a motion, that we make a request that they come to a board meeting. I don't care if it's two weeks or four weeks, but it ought to be soon.
I'd second that.
I've heard it.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Commissioner.
You know, the, first of all, I want to say, the Housing Authority has the right to restrict smoking, so the garage thing is out of the question, but it's just the way it's been handled that we're concerned about, and the way that you're getting these 14-day notices every time you open your mouth. The, I think we ought to be directing this invitation to the Chair of the Housing Authority Board, not the employee. I think if we direct it, I don't know if it's Mr. Cedarstrom still or not, but if, I think we ought to be directing it to him, or her, whoever's in charge of the board that we appoint. They should be getting this invitation, because Joan is not, apparently is not passing on information when we send it, they send it to her.
I agree.
So, let's ask the Chairman of the Board to come, and with any number that he wishes to explain what's taking place.
Or staff.
Yeah, that'd be fine, anybody, everybody.
I have the majority, my printer ran out of ink, but I have the majority of the stuff printed out already, if you guys want it, for the U.S. Department of Justice, Disability, Rights to Laws, and.
I'd just like to make a comment, I'm just kind of freewheeling this morning, but I'm very concerned about the fact that you have contacted other authorities that could bring down the House. We don't want to participate in that, and we can't as a governmental body, we don't want to encourage you to be, but you have to exercise your rights, so.
We just felt no rhetorical.
We need to be very detached from that. So, we're interested in how you've been treated, whether or not you've had access, whether your concerns are being heard, what their response is, telling you to shut up and so forth is not the way to run a business. So, I would like to see the Chair down here with any staff and everybody else to answer questions publicly. I agree totally with what Commissioner Morgan has suggested.
Quite honestly, it's very frustrating to try to deal with these other entities, so I would prefer to deal with you guys if we could get assistance.
Commissioner Duda? Thank you. I'm sympathetic with your plight, but I am not on board with inviting the Housing Authority Board down here. I don't think you have exhausted, you haven't spoken to them yet. If you speak to them, and they turn a deaf ear, whatever, then the next step perhaps would be that we start to get involved, but you haven't yet asked them directly to address your situation, and, I mean, these are volunteers, and I don't want to embarrass them or rake them over the coals if they haven't.
No.
For all we know, we don't even know that they know of your problem yet.
Right. It's one individual that keeps stopping it, and we just finally got asked.
I get that, but if you go speak to that board, then you will, I mean, you'll know firsthand what kind of support or response that you're going to get. I think it's premature for us to even invite that board down here. They don't answer to us. We appoint them, and then that's it, that's the end of our involvement. I think you need to go to that meeting Friday. If you strike out there, then perhaps we look at seeing what can we do to help you. But I think your first recourse has to be addressed, to address the board. And I know that she shelters the board. I mean, I've run into problems where I've had somebody call me with a problem, and I referred them to the board, and boy, did I get a call quick from Ms. Burdellini saying, "Don't ever do that again. Everything comes to me, not to my board."
Exactly.
But you have the opportunity to address the board directly, and that's what I think you need to do.
I'd be more than happy to go there, and I totally respect that decision, but I feel with the other civil rights that have been violated, that are noted in the paperwork there, that Ms. Burdellini at least needs to be held accountable for the violations that she's doing.
Right, and unfortunately, this is not the board. You can grieve your, air your grievances there, but we are not charged with controlling that board. Now, I do have some comments. We have a motion, a second on the floor. Since it is not an item on the agenda, can we take a vote on it? And if we do, what standing does it have? I asked our Law Department and.
This was a motion to request, again.
Right, invite.
To invite them to come down here.
Right.
You know, I don't know that you even have to do a formal motion, it could just be the Chair requesting Kathy Kelly to extend that invitation.
If I could, I might just respond for a second, Commissioner Duda. You know, with you having that experience, it'd be like, you know, Kathy Kelly telling people, "Don't ever go to the board, everything comes through me."
Right.
I mean, that just isn't the way that we should be operating. I mean, you know, you go to whoever you want, and everyone's respectful of that position. There's anything to hide, and we are public bodies, and I think, you know, it just doesn't seem right when you get that kind of a call. I'm amazed.
Well, I agree, we were blessed with staff that is a little more transport, transparent, I think, than what they have out there.
Yeah.
They operate a little differently, I'll give you that.
And maybe that's why, you know, talking with the board is a good idea, because we want to find out, is that your policy? Have you directed people not to come to you as a board member? Maybe we need to be appointing other board members to the board.
Now, how is Joan, if I may, how is Joan appointed? Is she appointed to the board and then the board?
No. Hired by the board.
She's hired by the board. Okay, so she is protecting her position by not keeping the board up to speed, from what it sounds like.
I would say that.
You would not say that, okay. I don't know the situation, internal workings, Commissioner Rogers?
No, I mean, I wouldn't.
That's not a safe assumption, you're saying.
No, I mean, knowing her, I wouldn't say she's protecting her position from the board. I mean, it's just, you know, it's just philosophy. I mean, sure, they run the day-to-day, and I think it's up to her board to determine what they think is day-to-day and what's not, but I think this is a clear issue of a complaint that they need to hear. And, you know, I'm fine with doing protocol, whatever it is. If they can't handle it there, I think you should come back. I mean, whatever needs to get it, but I think they need to get heard from a higher authority.
Do you have email capabilities?
Yes.
Okay. Would you email us your impressions of the meeting with the, their board?
Yes.
And then, if results are not satisfactory, we will take it from our end, and Commissioner Boyle is known for doggedly going after things.
And I respect that.
Some type like.
Persistence pace.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Rogers.
I mean, but to the point, I, you know, I think you need to do what Commissioner Duda's saying, to go to the board, but I'm just, I'm kind of concerned with that statement of you need to get there 45 minutes to fill out paperwork. That's, that's concern.
Especially when it's already an issue that we've been trying to contact other people, I mean, first we went to our landlord, then we went to her, and we haven't been able to get past her. This is the first time, and why would you, I'm sorry, but it's, it violated our rights, you know, as people, when they say, "Well, we only interviewed the two properties that were 80 and 90-year-olds," because they have a harder time moving around. Excuse me?
And if we could do one last comment?
Yes.
From, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Sheila.
Sheila, thank you.
That's okay. You can say no, but I have four recordings of Joan, so it's not me just saying she did things, if you want to hear them.
Commissioners?
No.
Yeah, that's what I, my feeling is.
That's for their word.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for your guidance and direction.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Claire, so what we will do is you're going to go to the board, we'll hear the results of that, then if it doesn't seem like we're getting somewhere, we'll invite the board down.
Correct.
I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Borgerson?
What time is the board meeting Friday?
8:30.
In the morning?
Yeah.
And you're supposed to be there 45 minutes before?
It's not going to be 45, because they don't open until eight.
Yeah. You're here 45 minutes early, but you've got to wait until, you know.
Where is the meeting held?
At Douglas County Housing, 107th and Fort.
I'll get my passport and get out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for hearing us again.
Is there any other issues that someone wishes to comment on in front of the board? Seeing none there, we will go on to the next item. Next, we have. Public hearings, thank you. We have a public hearing on application G-8-11, which is a, to adopt the National Energy Code, and the applicant is Douglas County Environmental Services. Kent?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Horn, Director of Environmental Services. These two items before you for public hearing today are fairly routine items that we do periodically. As the state adopts new codes, they ask us to follow suit, and we are doing so. Just ask for your approval.
Commissioner Boyle?
Kent, I was curious whether these codes will conform with what the city has on, because they're continuing to head out there.
The city normally adopts these codes as well, and my understanding is that they have not adopt, yet adopted the energy code yet, but they have adopted the electrical code.
Okay. You know why they haven't?
No, I don't, why they haven't yet.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt? Oh, we're still in public. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this? With that, we will close the public hearing?
Second.
Let me read B. B is an application, G-7-11, to adopt the National Electrical Code. And I'm assuming, Mr., that the testimony is the same?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote? We have our committee discussions and any action necessary. A finance committee, Commissioner Duda and Commissioner Morgan.
Next step is basically to start the public meetings on the budget. I think that was your suggestion, and I'm great with that, to have those open meetings, and Joe's going to be lining that up, so we can start to have those in the very near future.
And if I may, on the Tuesdays when we do not meet, if it is convenient, the committee can meet in this room perhaps, and have it televised at the time we normally have our meeting, and that'll be your call.
We could do that, and we can also, sometimes we don't have something else scheduled, and I'll leave that to Joe as the Director, we could do it after the board meeting also, depending on our agenda, and looking at it that way, too, and Commissioner Duda, whatever you think.
It's going to be, I like the idea that we're going to be doing open meetings, advertised open meetings. That does become a little more cumbersome, it's harder to get together and say, "Are you free in half an hour?", you gotta say, "Are you free Wednesday at 3 o'clock?" or whatever, you know, days ahead of time. But I still think it's a good idea that these are going to be open public meetings, so looking forward to the process. I think it's going to be so time-consuming, I'm not sure that it's going to be that interesting to be televised, this is watching sausage to be made, but.
Yeah, I like watching chess.
Okay, that explains it.
I'm sure they will televise the committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
I wanted to ask a procedural question on looking at budgets. You know, so many of the problems that we have trying to make things balance is the spending of elected officials, and I'm looking specifically at the crime lab, for example. We spend, we spend over $800,000 a year in payroll at the crime lab, and I believe now they have 14 employees, maybe 15. The city has 17, and we have the State Patrol involved in all this, too. So, we have quite a few people that are involved in crime labs, and I don't know whether there's, you know, what the, what the activity is, to tell you the truth, of everybody, and how all that's working. But what I'd like to look at, and my specific question is, are we able to go into a department head's budget and draw a line through a position?
Department head or elected official?
I'm sorry, elected official.
I don't think we do.
So, what's, you know, I guess, there's no way to not defund a position if the elected official walks in and says, "I need 28 employees," and we eventually, I guess, decide to pay because of the pay plans and so forth, but we can't say, "No, you only get 26." Is that correct?
No, but what we can do is come up with a budget based on what we think the real need of that department is, and of course, then they can overspend that budget if they choose to do that.
Okay, well, I'm having second thoughts about all this public building of budgets, because if we can't get in and get them to, I mean, I guess, there's probably some value in having an elected official tell us that he or she's going to do what they want to do regardless of our spending constraints, particularly with now with the item we're going to be discussing soon on the depletion repeal of the inheritance tax. We're in deep trouble this time, and we have no way out, except severe cuts, closing things, or huge increase in property taxes at the governor's demand.
Correct. Well-stated, and I do think it's important that we ask publicly that the elected commissioners continually justify their budgets, and the payrolls they are creating. Okay, anything else on the finances?
Thanks.
Next, we have administrative services. Commissioner Tusa?
Nothing today, thank you.
Next, we have youth services, child and youth services, Commissioner Rogers. Okay? And note that the Child and Youth Services Standing Committee meeting is held the first Tuesday of every month at 1:00 p.m. in Room 903 here at the City-City Building. Community services, Commissioner Duda?
Nothing to report. We will be meeting after the meeting today.
There will be a meeting immediately following, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
The meeting today.
Up in 903.
Again, in 903 of this building, on community services, and the agenda is on our website?
Yeah, we've got two inter-local agreements we're going to be discussing, one having to do with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and one having to do with solid waste, working with Omaha and developing a solid waste disposal plan.
And these are open, these are open meetings. Next, we have criminal justice, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I have a 26-page report I'd like to hand out. No, I have nothing, everything's under control. We are going to be moving, I spoke with Ms. Kelly, and we're talking about, originally we're going to do Friday afternoon, a tour of the work release and day reporting, get a little briefing on that. That apparently doesn't work, so we're looking at the following Friday, and we'll be in touch to see how your schedules mesh.
Very good. Now, we have human resources, we have our weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, and we have some legislative issues. One is LB-931, which changes the provisions related to flood protection and water quality enhancement bonds. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. This is same old, same old. This is revisiting the old issue of if the NRD with their bonding authority and all now chooses to place a dam site, a project, that is partially in our jurisdiction, the law was supposed to be to allow local governments a role, a say in what they did, but because they don't have the word, or because they have the word exclusive jurisdiction in there, if a project overlaps at all, goes at all outside of your jurisdiction, then you lose all say in it, and nobody can say anything. So, all they have to do is make sure their projects always go in at least two jurisdictions, and then nobody can ever tell them anything. The sole purpose of LB-931 is to strike one word, and that is exclusive, so that if they propose a project that is even partially in our jurisdiction, we would have a say in that project. So, it's not one, I mean, I know we've got the inheritance tax and other issues that are probably more pressing, but this is an important issue that we have been involved with for years, and I hope that we will continue to at least lend our support to the citizens that have been so diligent in trying to stay involved with this. So, with that, I would move that we support, go on record in support of LB-931.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morgan? Okay, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I agree completely with what Commissioner Duda has said. This is a very important issue, and there are neighbors out in that territory that came down to talk to us on a dam, and we need to make sure that they're alerted to this, because their testimony as homeowners would be much more valuable than a.
They're the ones that brought this to our attention.
Okay.
Our friend Sean Malott.
Okay, well, I knew Sean did, but I didn't know if the neighbors who were threatened with imminent domain had, were triggered. So, that's great, this is a very good bill, and I definitely support it.
And is there anyone in the audience who wanted to discuss this issue? Okay, with that, we have. that, we have a motion and a second. If we could call the vote, please. Karen, could you come to the podium?
Motion passes.
The next, we have LB seven ninety, the termination of the inheritance tax and, okay, I don't know what I said, but LB nine seventy, termination of the inheritance tax and change income tax rates and calculation. And we do have a PowerPoint, nine seventy, yeah. Okay. I corrected my...
No, it's not at all here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So long as we know what it is. Okay, thank you. This is something that Commissioner Borgeson and Commissioner Duda would like to talk about, I believe. But if I may have the prerogative of going through this real briefly. Okay. Nebraska inheritance tax, if you'd flip the slide, please. The tax is based on the fair market value of the property on date of death. The tax is calculated on the relationship of the person receiving the inherited property to the decedent. Surviving spouse pays no tax. The surviving spouse is totally exempt from Nebraska inheritance tax. The immediate relatives, children, parents, siblings, spouses of same, and lineal decedents of the decedent have a $40,000 exemption to each beneficiary, and the tax on the remaining balance is 1%. So I'm going to use an example of a million-dollar farm with four children. The wife is deceased. The father passes it on to his four children. They each would pay taxes based on a $250,000 inheritance, which leaves them with $210,000 in inherited taxable proceeds. 1% is $2,100. Now, charities, remote relatives such as aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews, they have an exemption of $15,000, and each beneficiary is taxed at 13% of their tax net taxable proceeds. Non-relatives receive $10,000 exemption for each beneficiary, and the tax is 18%. So if you leave your property to your neighbor, to a friend, they get taxed at 18%. All charities are tax exempt. Now, these rates apply to deaths after January 1st of 2008. Different rates and exemptions are for earlier deaths. Next slide. Okay. In the past three years, we have averaged 1,038 estates that paid into the inheritance tax system. The Douglas County population is 517,000, so the percentage of county residents subject to the tax was 0.2%. A very small amount. Considerations we have to take. Current county tax levy is 26.459 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. Every penny of tax levy raises $3.5 million. Douglas County inheritance tax proceeds have averaged $8.5 million over the past three years. To make up the amount that could be taken away from us would require a 2 to 3 cent tax levy increase. That could raise your taxes by 8 to 11%. Douglas County receives eight, yeah, an average of $8 million per year in inheritance tax proceeds. Given that residential and commercial valuations are flat to down, an increase in property tax would be the only way to make out the shortfall caused by eliminating the inheritance tax. Inheritance tax proceeds are primarily used by Douglas County to fund essential mandated, and I want to emphasize that word, mandated services, so, social services, and if you could flip the chart. We have, the financial history is shown here with a three-year average of $8,548,951. The money in '09 was spent as $4 million to the health center, $3 million to general assistance, $1 million to the health department. Veterans received $100,000, and we had a excess of money because of the way that we had not budgeted or allocated for it. That went to the general fund of $2.9 million. And here's the relating for Douglas County spending in 2010. We had $12 million budgeted, or that we spent. $4 million went to the health center, $3 million to general assistance, $1.3 million to the health department. Veterans again received $100,000. General fund, $3 million, and debt service, $600,000.
That's it?
Next slide. Is that it? Sure. Go to the next slide so we can do, okay. The health center in 2011 was $4 million. General assistance, $3 million. Health department, $1 million. And veterans received $100,000. The general fund, $900,000. Now, you'll notice the year-end reserve balance of $2.63, $66 million. That is for when we have budgeted amounts to spend the, the inheritance tax that we did not receive the amount we had budgeted for. This is our buffer. Now, if you take that $8 million out, the fund pretty much dissipates extremely fast. I, I think the governor's intention is very good, but I think the way of going, the governor's intention of eliminating the property tax, he says, is to help raise our standing in the rankings of...
Yes, inheritance.
Did I say, okay, I'm sorry. Of raising the inheritance tax is to help raise our ranking in the line, in states, what is the word I'm looking for? To raise our rankings amongst the states in the desirability for having lower taxes. The thing is, this is going to pass on directly, it's a tax shift, directly to the property tax owners. There is no way we can finance our mandated services without this fund. And to replace this fund, we would have to raise your property taxes. Now, in the rural districts, many of the counties are already at their tax mill levy limit. They cannot tax you more. This could be disastrous to some counties. It really could. With, that's the end of my presentation. Commissioner Duda or Commissioner Borgeson, do you have any comments? Commissioner Boyle?
I'd like to thank everyone who put this together. I was very pleased and surprised to see this last night when I looked at the agenda. Very well done. As a practical matter, I, I haven't done a lot of probate work, but one of the more recent files, probate that I did file, involved a 99-year-old person who had never married, who left an estate of about $900,000. And this person had three nieces, about 10 grandnieces, and 11 grandnephews. And so I began the procedure of, of locating all of these relatives, going through the procedures of telling them how to file a claim that they were entitled to some money from his estate. And a majority, not, not some, a majority of the people contacted me and said, who is this? Who, who died and is leaving me money? They had no idea this guy even existed, this man. And so I explained that he was, you know, your grandfather's brother, or whatever the relationship was, and went through the process that under Nebraska law, you're entitled to X amount of dollars. So we had people in Vermont, Oregon, New York, and California who never heard of a man living in Nebraska who amassed this $900,000, lived a fugue life apparently, but anyway, he had $900,000, and he left to these strangers. I don't even know if he ever saw them or not. But so those folks got a windfall. And yes, they paid an inheritance tax for receiving money from someone they never knew. Now, I don't think that's an injustice. I don't think it's unfair. The rates are extremely low. I've asked Rick Kubot to contact John Dougherty, who's the clerk of the probate court in Douglas County, to pull a couple of probates. We'll block the names and social security numbers and so forth. But to actually pull some of these files that are true, true estates that have been filed here, and you will see the distribution and how much people paid the taxes to each one of these people. Hopefully, we can find someone similar to this. But this is not a tax on families. You know, you, you heard what happened. You know, spouses don't pay taxes, children pay very minimal. And by the time you get through with it, it's a very small amount, and it's reasonable. And again, people say, well, this is a tax on someone dying. Well, it is and it isn't. But what happens is that someone who gets a, the recipient is receiving money, should that be untaxed? Should it be strictly a total gift? I don't know. I mean, we pay taxes on our social security, don't we? And that's even more egregious, I think, because we earned the money, put the money in, the government matched it and all that thing, and now it's being taxed again. That's what we ought to be abolishing. You know, if you want to have something good happen in Nebraska. Anyway, this is what we'd like to bring to you so you can see what's, what's taking place with these estates for real. This is not in the abstract. These are strangers getting money, and they're paying a, a small tax for that windfall. And I think we need to talk more about that. The other thing is that this money goes into a general fund, and it is, as Commissioner Kraft and others so ably demonstrated, it is used for services for the living. It is used to provide help to veterans, to the poor, to children, to the folks we have at the Douglas County Health Center who are suffering in their old age, no place else to go. This is where that money goes. This is not used to buy candy bars. This is real money to help people, and it's a, really a devastating blow to the people of our community and across the state. One final thing. The Nebraska Farm Bureau and the Cattlemen's Association have taken a position against, now, they may have a real claim to this position because of the ags, the ag community involved. I'm not hard-hearted toward that. If there is something that needs to be rewritten to assist farmers and ranchers to passing property on to people, we should, we should support it. We should try to figure out a way to help people in that situation so they are not taxed unreasonably. So if there's something we can do to support ag, we ought to make that a part of this bill.
Commissioner Duda?
Guys, I'm taken, taken aback that you're so friendly to farmers. As a member of Farm Bureau, it bothers me not to be on the same page with Farm Bureau. I mean, their, their response is, ag land is going up fast, and it is. We've had a boom, and, I mean, but farming is cyclical. It's going up right now. Doesn't mean it will be a year or two down the road. On, on our farm, our taxes went up by a third this year, by, by $7,000. And, and we got flooded and aren't even going to be able to plant all of our ground next year. But I, but I get, I mean, I know, farmland is going up. And, and so for a lot of the counties, that's a very real thing, that they will be having an increase in valuations. But, you know, I can look at perhaps both other farmers in Douglas County and say, are we saving the budget? And no, we're not. We're too small in Douglas County. We, there just isn't enough rural influence in Douglas County for that, to, that argument to, to work here. We have to bring our needs to the attention of the legislature. I, I understand Commissioner Borgeson will be going down Thursday and speaking, representing us, and I thank you for going down there. This is important, that the legislature understands what they are doing to Douglas County. I, I like the Farm Bureau. I tend to agree with most of what they say, but the, the handful of farmers in Douglas County aren't going to be able to save the day on this one with, with our increased valuations. It is important that we let the world and the legislature know what this is going to do to Douglas County.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Well, I think if you look across the years of what our mill levy is, it has stayed pretty even for the entire time I've been on this board. We've raised it a penny or two here and there. But the important thing with...
And lowered it in times, yes, that's true. And the, I lost my train of thought. Sorry.
The important pieces of the presentation, I believe, are two things. And that is that over the course of three years, there was 1,038 parcels that affected, the properties that affected this, that affected 0.2% of our total population. So when the statement is made that this is a middle-class property tax, or tax reduction, to me, that is not a true statement. This is 0.2% of our total Douglas County population that this inheritance tax affects. Secondly, we lost last year 3.5 million and, and 2.1 million, I think, of Keno money, a total of almost $5 million last year with the loss of state aid in Keno. And now we're talking to approximately $8 million this year. And last year, we held the taxes, we did not raise taxes. And this year, we've made the commitment, not by resolution, but by, by discussion, that we are going to try to craft this budget without a tax increase again. And so in order to do that, you take the option of raising the mill levy off the table, and it's cutting services. End of story, period. That's what it is. To the tune of not only $8 million in loss of inheritance tax, but also the $5 million or so that we're already short, knowing that we're short going into this year's budget. So I think the two important pieces, when I go down Thursday, is to center our attention on what the history of this, this tax has been, and what the effect it has on not only Douglas County, but counties in general. And also, the, the, I think we've been very conservative as a board and very responsible stewards of the taxpayer dollars over the course of the 17 years or 18 years I've been on this board. And I guess the legislature, I mean, I, I know they're in the same boat we are with reducing budgets and, and trying to reduce spending, but I think there needs to be much more conversation between the two instead of just winging out three and, four million and $8 million cuts to counties year after year. So again, I think if the people understood really what this did to county government and what the effect was on county government in losing this, I think that there would be a different story. You don't hear a total outcry of people lining up to have the inheritance tax reduced. They talk about our property tax being reduced. What this does is shift the responsibility of that makeup on to the property tax. And to me, that's what happened last year when they reduced the state aid. It's a shift down to the counties. Again, our revenue is, the majority of it is from property tax. That's where you hear the people with the outcry, is to reduce their property taxes. And this is an indirect effect of, unintended consequence, if you will, to the property tax.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I'd like to pick back up, pick up where Commissioner Borgeson was at and say that. I mean, few people out there know the, the intimacy of the relationship that the counties have with the state. I mean, it's so intimate that it's like me, it's like my wife telling me she's not going to pay for my kid's lunch, and saying, I need to pick it up. It's coming out the same pot. I mean, that's how intimate it is in regards to where you relate to the citizens. And the fact that most people don't know, and I think the governor never mentions in his discussion, is that they have the almighty payer of last resort clause, that they can do whatever they want to do when we have to pick it up. I think the point that also needs to be made, I mean, the premise that all of this is kind of based on is the fact that there's a list, and we're listed as the place least favorite to die. You know, there's also a list that's been there a couple of years, and, you know, we tend to be the third highest in black childhood poverty. We tend to be in different places where we are on the health ratings, and none of those lists seem to matter in some regard when the budget comes. So I'm just saying to put it in context, this is a, you know, the premise of it is based, there needs to be a little more thought on it. And the fact is that, you know, he's being put off in the role of being physical when basically they're just putting a decision on somebody else to make that hard choice. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'm going to let maybe Mary Ann wanted to speak to what he just said. So, you...
You bet.
Well, and I think that there have been commissioners across the state that have, I've had discussions with that, we're thinking, maybe we should throw in an alternative to the legislature, that if they are going to pass this, that we should start to have them look at, right now, we have a, the option of a... Right now, we have a, the option of a sales tax, but it's only within the unincorporated areas of Douglas County. To open that up for the counties to have a portion of the sales tax in order to make up this shortfall, if this so, if this does go through. I don't know what everybody's feelings are on that, but I think we have to continue to have those discussions alongside of trying to fight this tooth and nail going down Thursday. But one of the thoughts, Commissioner Morgan and I, when I asked him about it, was maybe if we say to the legislature, "If you're going to cut this inheritance tax, then give us the sales tax in that amount, and then anything above that, we have to go to the voters for approval." Again, I think it's a working relationship that we have to go down there to the legislator with. We have to try to be, and partner with them, to have them understand what effect this does have on counties, and see if they're willing to at least work with us a little bit on that. And I know, again, that there's other commissioners, and actually, maybe even at NACO, they talked about it a little bit, but there are commissioners and supervisors across the state that are willing to at least have people come to the table and talk about that option. Not my favorite option, but again, it's not property taxes.
Commissioner Borg.
Uh, Morgan? Okay. Couple things. One is I want to thank Commissioner Boyle for his conference call and explaining to all of us about that, so thank you. I want to thank Mary Ann for going down this week to the legislature. I have talked to several state senators about the idea where that amount, and we should say, I think I'm correct, Joe, in not saying $8 million, but the amount we got was 9.2 million, I think, in that inheritance tax, correct, this year?
One of the years.
Yeah. So the 9.2, and I did mention about the sales tax, and it can never be increased, it replaces it at this point, and that's in because of the property taxes. And when we talk about 2/10ths of a percent, it's 2/10ths of 1% is the people affected. It's not 2% of the people are affected. If you raise property taxes, you're talking about almost everyone, in a way. I mean, because you can say, "No, no, it's one property owner," but they live there with their family and their spouse or whatever. So that's a substantial increase, and I think it's about 10% of our mill levy is what that increase would be, or we need to make the cuts. The other thing I think, you know, would be accurate is, and again, I yielded Joe, who's knowledgeable on this, when you do that, we're only going to get it for half a year. I think Kathy Kelly mentioned that in one of the emails also, because you're not getting it all.
Right, in the first year, you would only get 50% of it because of the property tax payments coming in March and September, so.
Right. So that will add to the seriousness of this problem. The state senators seemed a little receptive to the suggestion about the sales tax. There could be no further increase unless there was vote of the people, period, but it would replace that rather than putting it all on property taxes. And, you know, I'm not for that sort of thing, but at the same time, the other choice we have, which we will be discussing without question, depending on what happens, we already had a 4 to 5 million shortfall. Now we're at a $14 million shortfall, you could say. We'd have to cut substantial services, period. That would be some really hard, difficult decisions for this board to make, and for each one of us individually to make. But those would be the only choices that we'd have. So, Mary Ann, again, I thank you for going down Thursday on that. And as I said, I have talked to a couple of state senators, and we'll see where this goes, and I'm certain there's going to be a lot more discussion and hopefully some options that some others may come up with for us.
Commissioner Boyle.
I was interested in the comment that Commissioner Rogers made about this is all a fix, so that the state becomes, a state now is the least, I think it was you that said, "The least desirable place to die." It's going to become the least desirable place to live. You know, we're one of few states, if you want to look at the misery meter, we're one of the few states in the nation that still taxes social security benefits. We will still tax retirement benefits, including retirement benefits of the armed forces, which is awfully amazing, that we don't see that as something that we ought to reduce. That would reduce income to the state, though. The bill, the proposal that is before the legislature is to cut funding to counties, which is, I guess, very difficult to understand. I do see that this inheritance tax, the death tax, as it's called, is seen as a big boogeyman, and something that has to go. But it really is, when you really get down into it, as we've looked at it before, it is really not what it seems to be. It is not this onerous, onerous thing. One of the ways to avoid all of this, of course, is to have a trust. And trusts can be set up for $1,500 or so for a simple, I mean, if you have an estate of, you know, several million dollars, but if you're leaving it to your spouse, there's no taxes. So, I mean, I really, it's hard to get a hold of what this is all about, except trying to bring the subdivisions of government to our knees. We have had such an anti Omaha, anti-urban feeling in the legislature, led by the governor, that is really disheartening. We have no team anymore. It's them against us, and everything they can do to make life miserable for people in the urban area seems to be what the plan is. And it's really difficult to say that, because my family, my heritage is in farming, until the Depression hit. They got out of farming suddenly, if you know what I mean. So I have roots there, too, and I think a lot of us do. So I have no animosity toward the ag community. On the other hand, I want to see it thrive and anything we can do to help. But we shouldn't be brought to our knees on some guise to help them, because it doesn't help them either. Finally, I want to, I was talking to Commissioner Morgan about something that I think is an important fact, and that is the number of employees that we have today versus, and I don't remember the figures, but Commissioner Morgan, I'd like you to, if you would, please enter into the record what you told me about how we've cut dropped in the number of employees and how the payroll's changed and so forth. It's an important fact, I think.
It's interesting. If you go back three years, we have 100 less employees than we had three years ago in Douglas County. Yet our payroll per month is $1 million more a month. So we have 100 less employees, where people are saying, "Hey, you know, I hope that you can reduce the size of government so you feel good that you've cut it by 100 employees in three years." Yet the payroll, without our control, is up $1 million per month. So I did have a talk I did a week or two ago. I was doing some work on that, and Ellen helped me get some of the information, and it was somewhat of a surprising number.
So the idea that we're not doing anything, and we're all sitting around here, you know, trying to figure out where to go to lunch next, is not, is not a true situation. We have cut numbers of employees, we've done everything we can, we're moving toward that, we're going to have to do some more severe cutting. So it's very difficult to hear the governor say that we need to do what he's done. I mean, I'd like to be able to reduce his income by repealing the social security tax and the tax on military pensions, for starters. That would reduce the state's income, and that'd be a realistic thing to do. And that's what he ought to be doing, but instead, he's coming up and taking away our revenue, and he's pushing us and other counties across the state over the cliff. And I'm on the NACO board, and the results of this bill in smaller counties, ag counties across the state, is going to put them into bankruptcy, almost. It is really a serious crisis in local government that we're facing. And it's a decision whether to put gravel on the roads or to shut it down. I mean, they are desperate. It's much worse in the rural part of the state than it is in the urban.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Commissioner Boyle, I think it was you who also pointed out that many of the people who pay this aren't even residents of Nebraska.
Right, they're not.
That pay this inheritance tax. So it's these relatives that are living in other areas that would be paying the tax on the property that was here, though. But it's not them paying the tax. I wish there was some way that we could find that number, you know, of how many were Douglas County or the state of Nebraska, and how many were out of state. But again, that's another important issue or fact, I think, that people need to know, and I'm glad that you reminded us of that. Secondly, when you were talking about-
Could I interrupt just one? Think Ted Turner.
Mm-hmm.
In all of his land, largest property owner, and if he ever dies, when he dies, that tax, that property is taxable, and all of that money comes in from outside sources.
Right, right.
I'm sure you did Ted Turner.
Probably has it set up in a trust.
Yeah, I think so.
And there will not be any tax on that, similar to what Mr. Buffett has done in others.
And Mary Ann, when you're done, we do have people in the audience who want to talk.
Yes. The second thing was when Commissioner Boyle was talking about reductions. I think if you go over our budgets the last few years, and not just employees, but also services, and one of the main ones that we can look at is the Health Department. Over the years that I've been on this board, the Health Department takes a look at every single one of their programs that they do, and if it can be done, or is being done, by somebody else on the outside, we work in order to reduce that. For instance, there was, we used to have a child clinic, health clinic, that was run by the Health Department. And the Board of Health decided that we were going to work over a course of a year to find a medical home for each one of these individuals that we were treating out in the community, because we have the two federally qualified health centers, and we had primary healthcare clinics on every corner from river to river in this county. And so we did. Nobody fell through the cracks, nobody lost service, they were all found a medical home, but yet we reduced that service. The second one was dental. We took a look at the dental, and it was deemed that there was the Creighton Dental Clinic. Each one of, again, those federally qualified health clinics were going to be bringing on dental services, so there really wasn't a need for the Douglas County to be providing a dental clinic. And so we reduced that. That's another reduction in services. The third one was, just recently here, was our Travelers Clinic, which they're looking at, and Commissioner Rogers can talk more about this than I can, he's on the Board of Health right now, but the Travelers Clinic, again, under the direction of our superb health director, Dr. Poor, she went out and found what was out there already and who was providing the service, and found that we didn't need to be providing it anymore as long as it was being provided somewhere else within the community. And so we're reducing that. So that's just one of many that I think people forget, or don't know, or we don't get the coverage from, or the press of, that the reductions that we are making. And so we're looking at everything to try to make ends meet. And again, those were just a couple of examples that I would, I think you wanted to throw out at your reductions.
Okay. And I understand we have people in the audience who'd like to speak. If you'd come forward, please. And please state your name and address.
My name is John Malone. My address is 11806 Washington Circle, Omaha, Maryland. Been listening to your discussion on this remarkably regressive tax, and I find it interesting now that apparently the more regressive the tax could be, the more regressive a tax is, the more favorable it seems to be in the context of your discussion. Because you say things like, "Well, this is just a tax on this few, many people, you know, .2% of the population, so let's load up on them." And I'm at, all that is, is an argument, by definition, and my background's economics, by definition, that's a regressive tax. When it falls on a few people, it's aggressive, and it falls unevenly. And the one that this, I mean, look, some of us are sophisticated enough to understand, I mean, probably all of us here, maybe, probably all of us here, that there are schemes that you can implement. Mr. Boyle referred to that, that certainly you can. Place things in a trust. Mr. Morgan, I'm sure you have detailed knowledge of that. Possibly you've been in business here in the community for many years, have availed yourself of those things. I don't know, but I would, if you ask me, I guess you probably have. And yeah, there are ways to structure your inheritance that you can avoid probate. It's the first thing a financial planner says to you, "Hey, you don't want to be in probate." But so what this really is, is kind of a gotcha tax. I mean, if you're somebody who's accumulating capital, and you know what, I think we'll all agree, we want as many capital accumulators in the state of Nebraska as we can possibly have. You're going to accumulate capital, welcome to Nebraska, all right? Welcome to, welcome to Douglas County. Bring all the capital you can possibly bring. Welcome. And, you know, the Chamber of Commerce would shake hands with you about that, and probably, you know, big enough, we'd have a little rally and put up some flags and wear badges for somebody to do that, to come here that way. And I think, I don't know the governor, not, I'm not a partisan of any kind, I'm an independent person politically, but I can really readily see, and I think you should at least acknowledge that what the governor's goal is commendable, we want to attract people with capital, and I don't want to go on too long here, but we want people with capital. And so taxing, when you don't want something, tax it. When you want something, don't tax it. That's kind of a general principle. And you want people to have their capital, I mean, okay, there might be the anecdotal case where somebody has 900 grand and gives it away to people that don't know, all right? But what that, what that person did, I don't know who the person, I don't think that's a typical case, but it might be the typical, something closer to a typical case is somebody gets trapped by the probate, because he didn't hire the financial advisors he should have or whatever. But let me talk about capital accumulators and where that best is done. The most efficient economic unit on earth is the family. That doesn't matter if you're in America, Europe, Africa, where I've been an investor for 18 years. It doesn't matter where you are in the world, China, certainly China, the most efficient capital engine uses capital most efficiently, most productively, is families. Somebody, we talked about family farms here. That's what goes on there. Capital is preserved, and you know what, we all know, especially in real estate, Commissioner Morgan, isn't it so? You don't hold real estate for free. If you're accumulating in your estate, real estate and things like that, you are paying as you go, all the time, to hold that capital. So it is not as if these people, upon whom probate falls, held that capital at no personal cost all their lives. They probably held it at great personal cost, both in terms of expense accruing to whatever assets they held it, even cash has its own pinches, interest income, so forth like that, or, so they held it that way. And they also sacrificed consumption, which is a social good. We think that's a social good. Our system runs on the fact that if you will deny yourself and postpone your benefits later in life, it will become a capital accumulation to you. And if you can actually defer it across generations, we should give you a kiss, not a tax. We should, I realize that there's a struggle right now, without much growth going on overall, to fund government. But I think you need to acknowledge that government in Nebraska, at the county level, government in Nebraska is disastrously expensive. Wouldn't we agree with that? That government in Nebraska, Commissioner Morgan, you know, you've been around, you're a studious man of government, you've been in numerous positions, isn't it true that in the state of Nebraska, the cost of government is ridiculously high? And that doesn't necessarily mean Douglas County government is ridiculously high, it doesn't necessarily matter that this little thing over here is ridiculously high. The fact of efficiency, you know, maybe this three-year argument by you, that, you know, you've cut back employees, and you've only gone up $1 million a year in salary, if I got that right, you've gone, you've-
1 million per month. That's why I-
For three years? Or total?
No. If you, if you compare-
Three years ago with today, we have 100 less employees, yet our payroll is $1 million more per month.
Across the whole three years?
No, right now-
Then it was three years ago.
Then it was three years ago.
And that's 1 million over what ex-
12 million dollars a year more with 100 less employees.
So if I said to you, "You've got your company, you've reduced the size of it by 100 employees
from three years ago, yet your payroll today, three years later, is 12 million more."
Can you turn that into percentage for me? Just rough?
The payroll number, I want to say, is around 220 million. All right, I don't have that number.
And it's gone up 12?
Yes.
In three years?
I think that's, it may not be that, it could be 140 million, I don't have that number.
If it went, if it went from 140 to 152 in three years, you know, congratulations, really, I think.
Right, but the fact is, you've got to consider that you have 100 less employees. So that percentage would be greater.
So unless you had increased productivity to the- So unless you had increased productivity to the extent of 100 employees over the base of however many it is, you've actually maybe taken efficiency yet. Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, we've tried, I think our goal, and when I ran for this office a year and a half ago, you know, my goal was to try to reduce the cost of government, less government. And that's, that's my attitude.
Yeah, I'm for you. And I'm not saying you're not doing it. Don't get me wrong. I'm just, I'm talking about the principles at stake here, is that I don't think it's the right principle to argue that this is going to fall on a few people that didn't get their planning done, and therefore it's commendable. In fact, this is a tax, I'm sorry, in fact, this is a tax against capital accumulation. It is based, and I think you should, in principle, always oppose that. I don't know where else you're going to get the 8 million. You know, I'm not even going to, I'm not even going to take that problem ball myself because you're the commissioners and I'm going to walk away and even pretend that that problem doesn't exist.
And I was going to ask you that at the end. You know, I appreciate your presentation and your enthusiasm. And you'd be a good speaker to listen to. But I want you to think about, and you're welcome to call me about it. You know, look at what our options are.
I preach every Sunday at Millard Community Church, and I want to welcome to come out and listen.
Okay.
All right.
But I wanted to know, at some point, tell us what our options are. In other words, what you see, not necessarily today, but you can call me on that.
Well, I can, I can speak a little bit to that.
Okay. If you don't mind.
Just in terms of the way to, the way I would think, the way I think you should think.
All right.
Is that you should look at least regressive means. Now, somebody here talked about the sales tax. We know that's regressive, you know? I mean, it's less regressive than this one. This inheritance thing, because, by the way, just like you have to talk about the cost of having lost 100 employees as opposed to just the savings, just as that's kind of a, another little factor that we have to consider if maybe service level went down. Or did we match that with productivity gains so that we really saved 100 employees? Or did we put ourselves on a tight rope that, you know, eventually a rubber band will snap? I mean, just like you have to think about that, you have to think about what is the cost of requiring people to go these directions to avoid probate? Now, I have 31 grandchildren, and I have probably 37 different business entities to protect myself and stuff. I won't go into that, but I'm in the, I'm in the world of probate, right? Well, how do I, how do I avoid probate? People say trust, you know, get your house in a trust, and all the things that people say to do. But there's a cost associated with going that route. And I wanted to focus on the fact that the families are the most efficient engine of capital use. There may be the rare occasion where, okay, I don't know anybody, and I left my inheritance to go into probate. And through probate, we determine that, you know, I've got a great-grandnephew in Tennessee that gets all the money. But generally speaking, this is a tax on capital where tax has already been paid on the capital.
And you've made that point. We do have some commissioners who have some, I believe, want to ask you questions.
Yeah, I just want to be responsive to what Mr. Morgan, he asked me where I would, where I would go with tax. And I would just say, you know, if you only...
In the least regressive way.
In the least regressive way.
Regressive way, right. Commissioner Bergerson?
Well, I don't necessarily disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Malone. And I don't think that this board is saying that we like the inheritance tax. We don't like property taxes. We don't like sales tax. But that's, we're structured that way, that we're...
I hate them all.
Well, most, most people do.
We do, we hate them all.
And I think we'd get in agreement with that. And so what we're trying to say is, what impact that the elimination or reduction of this tax, it just so happens to be the inheritance tax, would have on counties, just as we did with the reduction in the state aid last year. So we're not saying that it's a good tax or we like this tax. But we're trying to show that being a creature of the state, being the payer of last resort, being the administrative arm, that does what the state tells us to do. And we do it through, one, the majority of our revenue from property tax, and this amount through inheritance tax or fees that are put on the users.
I think we both understand that.
So I just wanted to make sure you understood that we're not saying, because we're saying we, we're talking that we don't want this eliminated, that we like this tax. We're saying that we're trying to show what impact this would have on county government and the services that we provide.
And I watched the presentation, I understood it thoroughly, I thought it was very clear. Especially it was concise, which maybe I'm not being, but I mean, I did, I did like it, insofar as the whole story came across. I'm just saying, you're picking the most regressive tax to favor. That, you're on a wrong principle there. You're picking, basically what you're saying is, these people who've already paid their capital taxes, the state of Nebraska is throwing essentially a whole other federal capital gains tax on accumulated wealth that has already been through that. It probably, you know, it's already been through that. Because when it goes to probate, I mean, if there's any taxes due, that isn't probate. That, the taxes get paid, whatever's due. Then now this invented, basically, capital gains tax, about the same amount. Isn't it 18% as much as?
As much as, if you are a very, if you are not directly related.
Understood, no, I, well, what about grandchildren?
Yeah, they're at...
1%.
No.
No. Two, they were at two, was it?
1%.
Children are at 1%?
They're at 1%.
Children and grandchildren.
And grandchildren.
Okay. Commissioner Rogers?
Sir, you say you're an economist or you're a pastor?
Yes.
You're both.
Well, I'm an economist by training at the University of Nebraska, fine school.
Okay.
But making a living as an economist, you either have to work for government, which who wants to do that? So if you want the full story...
No, I just wanted enough to...
I don't, I'm not a working economist, I'm a trained one.
Okay, let me, let me put this in context.
I'm an investor, yeah.
I mean, let me put it in context, because I don't, because after this, you can, if the chair wants you to speak, you can say whatever you want to say. I just want to defend the statement you said about the government and efficiency part. Because I can't speak for anybody. This is how I see government. And let me give you a sports analogy, since I'm an athlete. Government to me is a referee. You got a game going on, and any referee, referee doesn't want to control the game. He wants the fans to enjoy the game. And I want everybody to enjoy life. I want them to spin, do whatever they want to do. But at some point, the referee tells you, "Get your hands off the player." You outside the lines, get your hands off the player. And at some point, you got to make a call. So at some point, if things go on, whether it be regulation, whether it be some things, governmental entities, after telling you so many times, "Don't do it", you have to call and make a call on how things go.
I understand it, it is your responsibility.
Okay, but wait, let me finish, because let me use my brief 12 hours of economics training. Because you make the case, like, you know, the inheritance tax is going to bring people in. You know, Texas, Texas has no income tax. Florida has no income tax. Wyoming, Idaho, all these other places have no income tax. We can take away the inheritance tax, but the only way population is going to come to Nebraska is if we build a dome over the state because of the weather. And so I'm just saying that because I think county government, out of the four governments that I've been a part of locally, is the cheapest. And when I say cheapest, it would take an act of God to squeeze pennies out of county government the way it's wired.
You're talking about Douglas County?
Oh, yeah. And I'm pointing to this man right here at the table, the way he's running.
Let me say what I was talking about.
No, I'm just, I'm just making a point.
Because I wasn't talking about really Douglas County.
Okay, sir, well, we're...
No, I'm sorry, I just wanted a policy with you.
Because I'd definitely like to talk to you, but I'm not so much comparing you, because people are going to look at this, and it's going to feed into this argument that government needs to not do this, government needs to do that. There's a place for it. And it just feeds into this argument, like, you know, we all are descendants of Adam Smith, and we believe in laissez-faire. And the fact is, we don't operate laissez-faire, because if we did, we'd be in a depression right now.
We are.
And if I may, sir...
We're in recession, not a depression.
Sir, if I may, we've been at this for 15 minutes. Usually we allocate three to four minutes.
So I'd definitely like to talk to you afterwards. I just wanted to make the point for the public.
We can all talk afterwards, but right now, I believe there's another person in the audience who'd like to speak. Did you wish to speak, ma'am, on this issue? Yes? Okay. So if we can proceed with the meeting.
Could I just answer what he was saying?
Why don't you answer him after the meeting, like you...
Well, I just want to say publicly, when I said the cost of government is extremely high, and I was looking at Mr. Morgan, he was, he was agreeing with that. And Mr. Boyle, Commissioner, I think, I think you've probably seen the information, you've been around a long time, you've been mayor of the city, that the cost of government in Nebraska is extremely high. I mean, is that, is that also your understanding? And I'm talking about all government.
No.
It's not your understanding?
No, it's not.
That is not a discussion here.
It is not, it is not out of line. There's some things that can be cut, there's no question about it. But let me mention something to you, Mr. Malone, that if a father dies and leaves $50,000 to a child, the first $40,000 is exempt from taxation, and the $10,000 is taxed at .01, which is $100. So the son or daughter will collect $50,000, excuse me, will collect $50,000 and pay $100 in taxes. Now, if you apply that percentage, $100, what that costs to collect the $50,000 is .0001. So we're talking about a miniscule tax. And to your points about this capitalization stuff you're talking about, you're just all wet on it. Because every tax that we pay, whether it's property taxes, I've already paid income taxes on that. When you write your check to the county treasurer for property taxes, we've already paid income taxes on it to the state and to maybe, you know, and certainly the federal government. We've already been taxed on that. So this argument like, this is the most vicious tax in the world, just doesn't hold water. Every tax we pay has already been taxed before. As I pointed out earlier, social security, pension, our retired veterans, they, their money, what they already paid income tax on, has been taxed again by the state. So this suggestion by Mr. Malone that this is the most egregious tax that ever occurred in the world, just doesn't hold water.
And we're going on 20 minutes, so we're going to go on to the next agenda.
Mr. Chairman, the property taxes, income tax exempt.
You are done. We're cutting it off, it's been over 20 minutes.
Mr. Chair, can I just make one note? I want to make sure, Mr. Malone, I'm not speaking to you in particular. I'm just, I'm speaking to the public at large, because I'm just telling you, this inheritance tax thing, to me, is a part of a bigger debate. So I wouldn't so much addressing you as the point that this is a public meeting. And when they look at it tonight, all of this is going to feed into the argument of the inheritance tax. And I want to make sure that those people watching, you know, understand the context of it. So I just want to make sure you know that.
I'm the only public speaking here today.
Right, but we usually allocate three to five minutes, it's going on 22 minutes now. So we're calling this discussion to an end, and we're going on the next agenda item. Thank you, sir. Okay. We need to take a position on LB 920 or 970? 970, okay.
What's to approve?
Oh, Commissioner Boyle.
To approve, proposal.
Oh, that was that, okay, thank you. To approve or reject? Do we have a motion?
To oppose.
To oppose, yes. Is there a motion? And there's a second. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes.
With that, we've come to the conclusion of the meeting. There is need for an executive session in order to protect the public interest with respect to discussion regarding labor negotiations and litigation. Could we have a motion? I'll, I'll move. And we also have, before we vote on this, we have a human resource committee meeting today at 1:00 PM in room 903. And we also have a community service meeting today immediately following this meeting, also in room 903. And we also...
There'll be about a 10-minute break between the end of our executive session.
And we also have an audit committee meeting, that's an important one, with Mike Dornicky, in 903 at 3 o'clock. I'll be there, I'm not sure if anyone else will be, but he said it's an important one.
And thank you. With that, I'll ask for the vote.
Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Duda.
Mr. Rogers and Boyle.
Motion passes.
Four for four on TV?
Four for four on TV?